Everyone, welcome in. We are so excited to have you here for our Fall Housing Justice Forum. There are so many candidates here, so many participants here. We cannot thank you enough for spending your evening with us. So, thank you for coming and joining us today. My name is Amy and I'm Equity Engagement Director here at Urban Homeworks. Before we get started, I just wanted to walk us through a few kind of housekeeping guidelines. So, one thing to know is closed captions. You can find in the lower right corner. Click captions and you'll be able to provide those closed captioning for the remainder of the evening. If you are able and willing, we'd love to see all of your beautiful faces. So, if you are comfortable turning on your video, that would be wonderful. We do ask you to be muted for the entirety of the event, so please just make sure that you are in fact muted. For viewing today, we recommend two options. You can either do speaker, which will allow you to see the individual person speaking at the same time or in time, or you could go to gallery and it allows you to see the various candidates that we have here today. Now, before diving into the remainder of the event, we would love to do our land in labor acknowledgement. At Urban Homeworks, we acknowledge that we live our lives and do our work on land that European colonizers stole from the Dakota Peoples indigenous to Minnesota. For this theft to occur, sadistic acts of genocide, rape, and forced assimilation were employed. We also acknowledge that we live our lives and do our work on land that was cultivated and developed by bodies that European colonizers stole from West African countries through the transatlantic slave trade. In order for this theft to occur, sadistic acts of genocide, rape, and forced assimilation were employed. We acknowledge what was taken from our collective human ancestors. As we do so, we commit to work and fight for the liberation of the descendants of those enslaved through American chattel slavery and the sovereignty of all native peoples. Thank you all. We are so excited to have you here today and we have a jam packed schedule. But first off, welcome you to our Urban Homeworks Fall Housing Justice Forum. But some of you are familiar with our work and some of you are meeting us for the very first time. Thank you for being here today. So, who is Urban Homeworks? Well, we are a nonprofit based here in North Minneapolis, focused on housing justice. We have affordable housing units both in North and South Minneapolis as well as St. Paul. Not only do we focus on providing safe and dignified living and housing through our properties, but also through our homeownership pathways, opportunities. Part of our work and why you're here today is because we are committed to being a bridge between our elected officials and community, providing intentional relationship building and accountability between those in office and who they serve. And that's kind of why we're here today. It is 2023 is an election year for Minneapolis, meaning you have the opportunity to vote in our new city council. So, today is an opportunity to hear from them, hear why they deserve your vote, hear their views from everything from housing, affordable housing to zoning to TOPA and areas outside of housing as well. We want to give you the opportunity to ask your questions specifically while just also hearing kind of their elevator pitch of why they're running for office, who they are, and again, why they deserve your vote. So, we are so excited for the conversation that is about to unfold. We thank each and every candidate and community member for being here today. And with that, I will pass it off to our Executive Director, Asolis So Young, who will be guiding us through the facilitation of today's events. Take it away, Asolis So.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. For the sake of time, we're going to go ahead and dive right into the conversation. So, we're going to have each elected that is present today go share with us essentially their pitch, a very short two-minute pitch. We do have one candidate who was unable to be here today, who did send a video ahead of time, so that candidate will have an opportunity to get his voice out to you all as well. So, candidates, if you can, go ahead and give us an intro of who you are and why you are running as and include what housing justice means to you and how you plan to achieve housing justice if you are selected for office. And we're going to go ahead and start with Ward Three and Michael Rainville.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Great. So, a little bit about myself and why I believe in housing justice. I had the good fortune to go to De La Salle High School, where they instilled the La Sallean values in me of dignity for all, St. Thomas, and then later Notre Dame. I also served as the parish, the Chair of the Parish Council at Our Lady of the Lord's Catholic Church. And that's what guided me in housing as a human right. And that if we truly want to have prosperity for all, it has to be housing for all. And that's my basic driver. I enjoy being on the council. I am up for reelection because I do hold the Third Ward seat. I voted for every affordable housing project. I've worked with my fellow council members, many who are on the call tonight to continue that growth in our housing at all levels, because the market rate housing of today becomes the affordable housing of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael. And now we will turn it over to Marcus Mills, who is running for the Third Ward Council seat. Sorry, it looks like actually Marcus has not joined us yet. So, we will go ahead and move to Ward Four, where we will hear from Latricia Vitale and Angela Williams. Thank you, Latricia.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Latricia Vitale and I'm the current council member in the beautiful Ward Four, the most northern part of our city. I'm running for reelection so that I can continue to do the work that I've been called to do, which is serve on the Minneapolis City Council. I love everything about serving on the council, good and bad. I love just walking in the building and seeing the artwork every day and looking for something new. But more than anything, I love how it feels to me now when my neighbors want government to work for them. I do this work because I want everyone in my ward or just the North Side in general. My colleague to the south of me, we always say, you know, there's no line on the North Side. That we're all one big happy, sad, angry, tough community over here. And so, no one knows the borders of Ward Four and Ward Five. What they know is they want government to work for them and I love doing that and I'm looking forward to continuing to do that work. What housing justice means to me is that everyone has safe housing. And safe, what I mean by safe is they can afford to pay for or purchase it. They can afford to send their kids to schools and, you know, buy dinner. Like housing, there should never be a toss-up between if you're going to pay your rent mortgage or if you're going to feed your children. I grew up in a household with a single mother full of insecurities around food and housing and, you know, school supplies and all those things. So, what I'm passionate about is making sure people on the North Side have opportunity more than anything. Opportunity to live in a single-family home or opportunity to live in a multi-housing unit. That's what housing justice feels to me. Again, I'm excited to earn your support and to continue to do this work on behalf of my family who I represent on the North Side, except my sister, she lives in Ward Five. We call her the Black Sheep. But, but I am excited to represent my mother, my brother, my nieces, my nephews here in Ward Four. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Latricia. Next we'll hear from Angela Williams and afterward, Marvina Hayes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Angela Williams. I am running for Ward Four City Council. What housing justice means to me is it can be kind of personal. I've been homeless. I've been in three shelters. I've been on six or seven couches and I've had my struggles with housing. I've also, and doing it, it really, I mean, and being in that position at that time, it really helped me understand what people go through being homeless. That was my first time ever experiencing something like that. So, it kind of gave me sort of a boots-on-the-ground experience and how to understand people's feelings around housing and homelessness in that aspect. From there, I went back to Chicago for some time and then came back here. So, when I came back here, I noticed that people had, people didn't know their rights. They were being egregiously abused by landlords who just do anything. Minnesota does not have anything, any rules or regulations or laws that hold landlords accountable for how they abuse their tenants. And so, I have, I used to sit on the Pennington County group that was meeting at the Urban League a few years ago. And so, I sat on that, that group or cohort or whatever you want to call it. And I developed a fair housing proposal that one day I will present before legislation to pass because I believe that, I know we have a lot of talk around rent cap and everything, but what I feel like is the most important thing is renter protections, tenant protections. And so, with the courts being against tenants, police, landlords, the system, tenants really need help. And this tenant ordinance, landlord tenant ordinance document is so vague and it's really just a bunch of words scrambled together. It really doesn't help the tenant. So, I've developed a fair housing proposal. I've developed a tenant leadership development program that would help tenants know how to build associations and know how to organize and represent themselves and know what the laws are so they can help themselves in a time of crisis. So, with that, yeah, I'm deep, I'm knee-deep or waist-deep in housing because because of my lived experiences and from all of my organizers. I've been organizing around housing since 2007. So, I know the ins and outs. I know what tenants need. I know what homeless people need. And right now, well, I could talk about that later, but that's what housing justice means to me is having a legitimate and something that doesn't have a bunch of words. Let's not play semantics. So, we need something that's going to actually protect tenants. And that's what housing justice means to me. And that's why I'm running. That's part of the reason why I'm running because that is such an egregious situation right now. And affordable housing, what does that actually mean? But, so that's why I'm running because things need to get done and I don't see them, I don't see it happening right now. So, and that's why I'm running, among other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. We'll now hear from Marvina Haynes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marvina Haynes. I'm running for Ward Four. The reason why I'm running for Ward Four is a few months ago, I just ran into a big housing issue where I had to sue my landlord and I won in court. The housing issue is dear, died desperate to my heart because I'm born and raised in North Minneapolis and I have seen the community decline over the years of living here. I don't think that no one should have to be forced out of their home because they can't afford to pay the rent because landlords are driving prices up so high. I do believe in rent stabilization and also the cap. And I really appreciate all of the work that Urban Homeworks has done. And I'm looking to partner with people who have the experience around that to help develop the community. Housing justice to me is making sure that people have a safe place to live and a safe place to play. And also that we close the racial gap. Minneapolis has one of the biggest racial gaps in America. And just like working on policies, housing pathways to homeownership, and just making sure that we grow as a community.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Marvina. We'll now move to Jeremiah Ellison from Ward Five.
Thank you guys for having me. Everybody, can you hear me okay? All right, great. My name is Jeremiah Ellison. I represent Ward Five. You know, I like to think that we're a haven for Black Sheep over here in Ward Five. And, you know, I'm born and raised here. I've been in office for about six years. And I'm running for reelection because I feel like there's still work to be done. There's work to be done on a lot of fronts, but there's especially work still needed to be done on the housing front. Before I ran for office, I was a mural painter and a comic book, on my way to being a comic book illustrator. And I was charged to run for office because I felt that there was need for creativity in the position. There was, there was need for creative leadership in this position. And, and because housing and anti-jetigation policy, anti-displacement policy was a huge passion of mine and it was an area that I thought we were lacking. And so, so I ran for office and I've been working on a number of things. One of the things that I think can fly under the radar is, you know, things like housing inspections, right? And so, in, you know, engaging in reorganization and a restructuring of regulatory services was one of the first things that I worked on when I got into office. Working on policy, like strengthening our renter protections. I heard that mentioned and it needs to be improved, certainly. But, but taking the first steps to strengthen renter protection, developing intergovernmental relationships with the state so that we can go after bad landlords, so that we can sue these large landlords, even when the city doesn't always have the capacity itself. We lean on those partnerships. These are some of the things that I think are really important and I think that they get us ever so closely to housing justice. To me, housing justice is really about stability. It's about prosperity and it's about dignity in where you live. Affordability is certainly a part of that, but also having the agency to rent or own at whatever level is a major part of that. And so, I look forward to the conversation tonight and thank you all for having me.
Thank you so much, Jeremiah. We'll now move to Ward Seven, where we'll hear from Katie Cashman, Kenneth Foxworth, and watch a video from Scott Graham. Katie, you're up next.
Hey, everybody. My name is Katie Cashman. I use she/her pronouns and I'm running to serve Ward Seven on the Minneapolis City Council. So, I am a renter. I live in the Loring Heights neighborhood, Loring Heights Stevens Square. I'm the youngest of seven siblings who grew up in Minneapolis. So, I am proud of my heritage in the city and proud to be a leader for future generations. Professionally, I have worked at the United Nations for several years. I worked helping municipalities develop environmental and social infrastructure. So, I know what it takes to take on big challenges in cities and I bring that to my work here in Minneapolis. I have also worked locally. I founded a nonprofit. I work now at a public interest law firm doing environmental law. And I'm a policy advocate and a community organizer and I have been inspired to run for this seat in Ward Seven, this newly opened seat in Ward Seven to bring the energy of including all voices in Ward Seven to the table. And I'm glad to be here tonight talking about housing justice. So, housing justice to me is about safe and affordable housing and creating the conditions for people to not only survive but also thrive. And I think that's not currently the case in our city for so many people. So, there's a really urgent need around developing a human rights-based and public health-based policy to address homelessness and to help people who are experiencing homelessness and help them to access stable housing conditions. And so, I would support a housing-first approach on city council and work to invest in that. Like Jeremiah said, I think we really need to work in partnership. I would like to work with the county that the issue of providing resources to people experiencing homelessness. I'd like to work with the state on delivering rental assistance and I would like to work also with all the great nonprofits and NGOs in the city who have been dedicated to housing justice and working on it for so many years. So, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Katie. Kenneth.
Good evening. My name is Ken Foxworth and I'm running for Seventh Ward. My history is, is a lot. I was the Deputy Chair of the Black Caucus for the Democratic National Committee for 12 years. I'm not a politician. I'm a Christian from Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church. I came here for three reasons. Safety, safety. Matter of fact, safety. I just got sick and tired of seeing when I was living downtown because I lived downtown in Minneapolis to heart. And I just see all the stuff that needs to be really changed with policies. I got a master's degree in urban regional aesthetics. My internship was right there in the city hall as a city planner. I get it. I understand that. When it comes down to house, I mean, house, housing. It's like this, and I'm being straight up. When I was young, my mom moved and my father moved, my family moved to the suburbs. And I'll never forget this, you know, it was Halloween and we saw all these lights that was around our neighborhood. And next thing you know, we stepped out and next thing you know, the lights just went out. And they were just telling us that we didn't want these black folks in our neighborhood. And it hurt me so bad. I was really hurt with that. And so, for me, I understand housing justice. I understand it because I went through it. I went to, went through the red line. I understand that too. And that's something that needs to be changed. But the other thing that we have to change is the way Black folks and other people of color to understand that the most important thing that you can do right now is vote for local government. If we do not vote and don't understand and don't see the people that look like us, understand us, be in a position of talking like us in different kind of ways. If it's Ebonics, if it's in a position where you're talking Gullah, if it's in a position where you're talking Spanish, if you're talking all of this stuff, they need to see us do what we said that we was going to do. And that is to stand up for the people. That is necessary. We say poor, but yes, we all are in the same boat. And that's the reason why I'm running. It's time for a change and that change is now. If we don't reach, breed, and teach, we have lose another generation. We have to be in a position of telling folks why it's important for us to vote, especially this time in this election, so we can change things that we see in the streets and what I see in the streets 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. We will now watch a video from Scott Graham, who was unable to attend today.
Thank you for allowing me to come to you today via video. I had a previous commitment, so I appreciate the flexibility. Also, thank you for taking time to participate in this forum. My name is Scott Graham. I'm a candidate for Minneapolis City Council in Ward Seven. I've been a Realtor for a little over 25 years in the Twin Cities and I own a small company called Uptown Realty. I've also got a lot of DFL experience. I was a Senate District Chair of Senate District 61, which is southwest Minneapolis. I am the CD V Chair and I've also worked at the DFL Party as a staff member. I live by Cedar Lake in a duplex that I own with my wife and we rent out half of it. I'm running for city council because I'm not done with Minneapolis. I'm not giving up. I believe we have excellence in our future and I want to participate in creating it. The main issues I've been talking about during our campaign are public safety, housing, and revitalizing Uptown and Downtown. In terms of public safety, we need a transformed culture in our police department. We have a new police chief who's got the right idea. I want to be on city council to support that vision with the budgets they need to become the force we know they can be. We also need to supplement them with mental health professionals like our Behavioral Crisis Response Team and with Violence De-escalation Teams like we're currently doing. In terms of housing, we need more housing, but we also need more affordable housing at all levels of AMI and we need deeply affordable housing. In terms of rethinking Uptown and Downtown, it's going to take creativity, determination, and persistence, and I want to participate in this work. Housing justice is preservation and expansion of affordable housing. Housing is a basic need. Everyone deserves a home. It is the basis for most personal success. We always need to be preserving our naturally occurring affordable housing. It's the least expensive way to the path forward. And we do that through, specifically through funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and by participating in the 4D Program, among other things. We need to continue to create more housing, building affordability at all levels of AMI. There's a program that Minneapolis has called Minneapolis Homes. The mayor just proposed a $2 million budget, which is a big increase. And this is a program specifically designed at the accessibility of homeownership from communities of color. I support it. Deeply affordable housing. We have great partners in town with Avivo, Aon, and others. We need to continue to help them fund this important, essential part of our housing infrastructure. And we need to remember to include wraparound services with things like trauma-informed mental health counseling, treatment for substance addiction, and things like methadone clinics and needle exchanges. When you ask me what my dream is, that's big. I want to eradicate poverty in the world. It's an impossible dream, but I think we should always pursue it because poverty is the trauma that touches everything. And most importantly, it touches children. So, thank you again for letting me come to you via video. My name is Scott Graham and I appreciate your time.
All right. We will now move to Aisha Chugtai from Ward Ten.
Hi, y'all. My name is Aisha Chugtai. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a renter, a former labor organizer, immigrants rights activist, eldest daughter to a Muslim immigrant family. And for the last 20 months, I've had the honor of serving my community in Ward Ten as their council member. I'm running to make sure the voices of those who are most impacted by decisions are prioritized in policymaking. I know what it's like to have to choose between buying groceries and making rent and I'm committed to working alongside Ward Ten residents to make sure no one in our community is left behind. I believe that housing is a human right and that means that every person in our community has a safe, affordable, and dignified place to live. Housing justice means prioritizing those whose needs aren't met in our existing housing systems, folks who are experiencing homelessness, low-income folks, elders, multigenerational families, folks with disabilities, immigrants, and refugees, and others, so that the vision of housing being a human right can be realized. I've been a champion for policies that advance this vision and if elected, I'll continue to work alongside impacted residents and policymakers to pass policies like rent stabilization, tenant opportunity to purchase a humane and comprehensive encampment response and just cause eviction protection, among others.
Thank you, Aisha. We will now move to Orin Chowdhury from Ward Twelve.
Hey, everyone. My name is Orin Chowdhury. I use she/they pronouns. And I live in the Hiawatha neighborhood in Ward Twelve. Ward Twelve is a part of the South Side. It's the southeast part of the South Side. And like some of the other wards, Ward Twelve is one of the open seats. For the first time in 10 years, Ward Twelve residents have an opportunity to elect someone new and I'm proud to be the DFL and labor-endorsed candidate running for the seat. I'm a first-generation Bengali-American, daughter of working-class Muslim immigrants who found their stability here in Minneapolis in Ward Twelve. I am a renter. I am a longtime community organizer. I've been organizing in our city for the last eight years on issues just like housing justice, labor rights, climate action, and helping elect progressives that share our values to take power to represent our community. I am also an experienced policy worker. I've served in two council offices. I've served during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic and when our city really went through devastation, when George Floyd was murdered and when we were going through civil unrest. I really feel like that experience is what's led me to run for city council now in 2023. When the seat became open, I had Ward Twelve residents that I've built trust with over the years reach out to me and really recruit me to run because I've often because it's oftentimes been a point for them to reach out to and connect to the city and learn what's going on and how we can improve our communities. And housing justice is truly a big core of the vision that I'm leading with, that what my community has asked me to lead with. Um, as a renter, as a first-generation working person, I myself have experienced housing insecurity. I know what it's like to go from couch to couch, try to figure it out. I know what it's like to watch your parents also struggle um to find secure housing. And the history of Ward 12 has a history um that calls back to racial covenants that existed within this community that has um disproportionately impacted homeownership and housing opportunities for Black, Brown, Indigenous working people in this community. And Ward 12 residents want to see that change. Ward 12 residents want to see our community be in strong allyship with housing justice. And I think housing justice means creating deeply affordable housing and also empowering residents within our city to be a part of the policymaking, to say, this is how I want housing to be provided to me. These are the types of protections I want to see. And I'm also really excited to continue my work in addressing homelessness at the local level. I really want to be a part of coordinating different agencies, Hennepin County, the state government, for us to all take action because every time we see someone unhoused, we can recognize that there's a policy failure there and that the way that housing works right now is broken because people don't have a safe and accessible dignified place to live. I'm super excited to get to know all of you a little bit better and take your questions. Thank you so much for holding this forum.
Thank you, Orin, and I will get your name right. I'm gonna work on that. That's important.
Orin, like Wolverine.
Oh, nice. That's helpful for me, Orin. All right. Got it. All right, we're now going to move to Ward 13 where we'll hear from Kate Mortensen and Zach Lavish.
Hey, everybody. I'm Kate Mortensen and I just want to thank Urban Homeworks for putting this event on tonight. It is so fantastic and I give a shout out to my sister Tammy Ogurete, my sister and former colleague, and um and also to Lavish Zach. Um, we've been running past each other on the doors. How you doing? I am challenging a 10-year incumbent for the Ward 13 seat on council. I am running on a platform of results and accountability. I'm looking to turn our audits and reports that we file into action that actually makes life better for residents of Minneapolis. I live down south, southwest Minneapolis, where largely, not completely, but largely, this is a white homeowner community. Uh, very, very settled community. We don't like change so much. And I am representing a more moderate space on council. What changes with me is the dynamics and changing the dynamics will change everything. I have a particular skill set in working across difference. I've been spending the last 10 years um creating and building businesses, um working in all parts of the city uh with government and outside of government and have the opportunity to bring together the private sector, the nonprofit sector, philanthropy, together with government and colleagues on council to get things done. So uh my platform is called Safe and Sound. And I hope that um folks who are listening who are interested will come to the Ward 13 Forum on September 6th at 6:00 PM. What does housing justice mean to me? I come into this conversation with a spirit of inquiry, with curiosity, with an open heart. Um, I don't need to know everything about every issue uh because guess what? Um, there are different ways of knowing. And when it comes to housing justice, it's an opportunity for me to sit back and learn from people who are closer and more proximate to the challenges of having access to um a safe, affordable and dignified um housing situation. So I have a lot to learn. I'm excited to learn with you and from you. Um, and so thank you for letting me be part of this event.
Thank you, Kate. Zach?
Hey, how you doing? I appreciate you for this opportunity to speak and answer some questions. My name's Zach Metzger. I'm an activist organizer, been a legislative aide, and I am the first non-white city council candidate for Ward 13. And I'm extremely excited to run alongside the residents of Minneapolis. Um, and shout out to Urban Homeworkers and Powderhorn Park, uh Powderhorn, Minneapolis. This is deeply important to me and so many other people. I grew up uh on 37th and 4th in a home that when I was 16 years old got foreclosed. And I personally, as well as family members, experienced extreme uh housing insecurity. Um, when we talk about Ward 13 specifically, we all know about the history of deep discrimination and its racially restrictive covenants, which is why Ward 13 has the three whitest neighborhoods in Minneapolis as well as the richest neighborhoods. And the patterns and practices from those racially restrictive covenants are still visible and seen today. And there's so much work that has to be done in undoing this. Um, that being said, my grandpa actually lived in Ward 13 as well as my dad and great-grandfather on my father's side. My mother, my brothers, myself would not have been able to live in my own family's home because of these racially restrictive covenants. Um, housing justice to me is is human dignity, is basic needs, it's 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 affordable, stable housing regardless of someone's socioeconomic background. Um, and it should not be treated as a commodity or a privilege. Um, for rent stabilization, I understand that it is not um, it is not a fix to the problem. But a $100 increase in rent has been shown in the United States to increase homelessness by 9%. Um, we also need a far more humane approach to the way we are handling encampments in Minneapolis. Um, council member Aisha has brought to our attention that over the last three years, we spent 5.5 to 7.5 million dollars on removing, in the most inhumane capacity, homeless encampments. Um, and what we are doing right now is also currently not working. Um, I also think that we need a tenant option to purchase and our rent stabilization needs to be on the unit, not the tenant. Um, I love the work you guys do. Um, and thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you as well for being here and for that response. We're gonna um go ahead and begin the question session. So in order to have some equity in this process, there are a lot of you here and we're really grateful for that. And I want to make sure that you all get fairly equal time, as equal as we can manage it. So I'm actually going to um ask some questions and I'm gonna change up the order that we go in uh throughout the evening so that everybody um again gets gets time to speak. So I'd love for you to reflect on what what makes this particular election important um from the city council perspective. Um, if if you feel like it's the same as all other elections, feel free to say so. Uh, but what are the stakes for this election? And so we're gonna go ahead and start with our Ward 13 candidates. And I will give you um a couple of seconds to just gather your thoughts. And then uh Zach, we're gonna go ahead and start with you. Uh, and Kate, you will be next.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Absolutely. What is the, what makes this particular election important?
For sure. This particular election is extremely important, I feel, because over the last three years since George Floyd, as well as the beginning of the pandemic, the city has seemingly just sat on their hands um and not made a decision in either direction. Um, I think that the way that things are happening, especially where I am running in Ward 13, where the incumbent has been in for 10 years and has spoken on uh a pragmatic, progressive approach, the way in which things are being done are clearly not working. And the needs of the people are not being met. The city's direction does not seem to be going towards what the people want. Um, so I am, it's really excited to be from the people, for the people, and give the people what they have been asking for as much as I, as much as I can.
Thank you. Kate?
So in 2021, the voters made some pretty big decisions on behalf of the city. We changed the city's charter and gave the executive, the mayor, what the mayor was looking for, which was the executive power to run the city, and gave the 13 members of um city council a modest, slim, moderate majority. And from 21 to 23, I started watching really closely. Here come those results. And I just have to tell you, I'm not seeing them. So I personally have run out of the benefit of the doubt for um the skill set that is needed now from from Ward 13, which I believe is one of leadership that has a vision and a plan, a commitment to both results and accountability for people. And then, and this is really important, and it's not just our our dynamics on council. We have a polarized um society, uh city, city council and having an ability to work across differences effectively. It's not the same as agreeing. I will represent the the more modest viewpoint uh politically of Ward 13 with a different dynamic. So with the census that has rebalanced the wards of the city, there are hundreds of people who have never voted for anybody in Ward 13. We have a two-year term instead of a four-year term and an entirely new role for council. Council role is different now. It is one of governance, oversight, being an advocate for Ward 13 and an ombudsman, and then also being able to hold the executive to um to account for delivering for people between the four years, one one election to another. So I'm really excited to step in, especially at this time.
Thank you, Kate. I will now move to Orin from Ward 12. And again, I'll repeat the question. What makes this particular election important?
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. Um, again, in my ward, it's a particularly important year uh for the first time in 10 years. Um, it's an open seat and um this is important because representation at the city level is about to change. It's also important for people to engage in my ward because it's an atypical city election. City elections usually happen every four years and usually there's a bunch of different things on the ballot that are there to poll voters um to the polls, but there's not that poll this year. So it's lower visibility and it's important that Ward 12 residents turn out and really make their voices heard. Um, I am running because I really believe that Ward 12 deserves experience that will hit the ground running day one. I have that experience. I also have the experience of building coalitions and bringing people together to really move values to action. I think we have um over the last few years, residents have felt really frustrated in a number of different ways, action around public safety, really having public safety that shows up for them, that's accountable, that's comprehensive, um that gets the job done. And also on the environmental justice front, on the uh way of supporting people who are deeply in poverty and experiencing that. And they're they're tired and ready for action and I want to work together with a set of 13 council members to make that possible in our city. And so that's what's at stake. I I also um will reiterate what uh the Ward 13 candidate said before me. Um, the role of the council has changed and it's really important that constituents and residents understand that it's that role of policymaking, oversight, and also making a budget that really serves the community. And now more than ever, council members really represent constituent voice and showing up for them. And what I'm really about is making sure that there's a people-centered budget. Um, the other thing that I'll name is we're at a time coming out of the pandemic where levels of government are really siloed, whether it's the county, the school board, our parks, or even um at the state level. And residents really feel when certain things aren't working out, right? Like if we aren't seeing the way in which we're housing people, if we aren't seeing um repairs in our parks, if we aren't seeing uh enrollment change in schools. But what they, what the gap really is, is that local governments aren't communicating. And that leaves people behind. And we really need people on day one that are going to help fill those gaps. And your council member is uniquely positioned to do so. And so I would say that's what it's, what's at stake and really pushing to change the status quo in our city because we could admit certain things aren't working and we really need to take creative and collaborative action to address them.
Thank you. Aisha, Ward 10.
Thank you. Um, so the city council makes the city's local policies, oversees the city's $1.7 billion budget and provides oversight to the administration while representing um their constituents. Uh, for years, those in in our communities that are struggling the most have not been prioritized at a rate that meets their needs and that continues to get worse. So we need courageous leaders who are willing to address some of the most complicated issues um of our time with with courage and with moral clarity. Uh, the outcome of this election is going to decide um what our communities look like over the next two years, whether uh the mandate from voters in 2021 to pass rent stabilization is actually honored, whether the city finally has a humane and public health-centered response to homelessness, whether gig economy workers earn a living wage, whether pedestrians, transit riders and cyclists are prioritized in how we build our infrastructure, whether we prioritize resilience as our climate is deteriorating and whether we invest in data-driven programs that ensure appropriate responders are showing up when we need help.
Thank you, Aisha. We'll now move to our Ward 7 candidates and we'll start with Kenneth. Kenneth, you are muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I mean, I think there's a, there's something that came up in the uh this year in the legislature that you have felonies finally have the right to vote. We have to bring those people out. The other thing too is, is that we have to be in a position of understanding that the people that is in my ward, close to around about 64%, don't make over $40,000 a year. But the other thing is that you get over half of them don't vote. Our key thing for this year is to get them to understand that their 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 right to vote matters. They have to be listened to. They have to be in a understanding that they know that they have somebody that supports them and understands them. I've been in the community for 42 years. I created programs like the Ace Institute that was part of North, part of South, part of the University of Minnesota, giving other opportunities because once they graduated, 42% of our kids went to post-secondary education. The other thing that I have done, I created things that we have done in the city by working with the Minneapolis Parking Rights Department, giving them opportunities that they can be in a position of growing and seeing the opportunity, what they have and what they can do. My problem was is if you say that you're African-American, Hispanic-American, and all of those things that deals with American, my question is, is that the end of American that says I can't. So who's telling you can't? We got to change them to understand that they can be in a position of voting. Now, the way that we do that is to be on the streets and giving them the chance to vote. That's the stuff that I do. And just like Barry White used to say, I practice what I preach.
Thank you, Kenneth. We're gonna go ahead and turn it over to Katie.
Thanks. This, yeah, this election in Ward 7 is super, super important. Um, we have had the same city council member for 25 years um since I was five years old. Um, and so there are really big shoes to fill in Ward 7. Uh, she has so much experience and so much impact on this ward and it's really gonna be up to all the residents in Ward 7 to decide on what's the future for Ward 7. Um, I will say my campaign has already knocked 5,000 doors in Ward 7 because we are trying to reach every single person and to let them know that there's an election this year and that they have a choice on who the next city council member is for Ward 7. Um, you know, we knock the apartment buildings downtown in Loring Park. We knock the single-family home majority neighborhoods over by the lakes as well. majority neighborhoods over by the lakes as well. Um so that's, I think, very important for Ward seven residents to know how impactful this election will be.
Thank you, Katie. We're gonna move to Jeremiah from Ward five.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'm gonna uh, there are a lot of reasons that this uh that this election uh is important. There's a lot of stakes. Uh but I'm gonna stick to housing because I I I know this is a housing justice forum, and I I wanna make sure that I'm 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 staying on that topic um because we could talk about public safety, and we could talk about a lot of different things. Um. I think that the city is still very much so in our uh this early phase of economic recovery. I I certainly, our constituents are in a a stage of economic recovery. Right? Since since the since the pandemic, since um you know, uh 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 since cost burden has really ballooned out of control uh and inflation has ballooned out of control. Our constituents are experiencing a level of cost burden. And uh I do not wanna see housing uh continue to be pushed on and add to that dynamic of cost burden for our constituents. And I think that there's a few ways, things that we can do. Certainly, building more has um has had a huge effect and allowed us to stabilize uh our housing market within the last two years. But what about the previous ten? And what about the next ten? Uh I think that we are positioned this term to give tenants a real leg up, give renters a real leg up. Both in being able to own their units uh with policies like tenant opportunity to purchase. Uh and in being able to uh have some predictability in what their rents might be moving into the future with rent stabilization. And so um. I think both policies need to be pursued. Um I think that, you know, I don't think uh that a two-year term is an excuse for us not to pursue them. Uh and uh and both policies have had a lot of discussion. Uh you know, the last thing I'll say is uh uh is that we need to continue to solidify this dynamic of the new structure. And I could, I could envision a council in a new struc- a new government structure that that cedes a little bit too much authority to the executive uh of the city. Uh and I wanna make sure that we don't do that, that we continue to lean on our uh on our position as people that hold the institution accountable uh and people that create the policies and people that have um uh decision-making power over the budgets to assert what our constituents, what we know our constituents need. Uh and that's my time, but um yeah, I'm I'm I'm, I think it's a great question. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Jeremiah. And I did notice quite a few um of your fellow candidates agreed with those last sentiments. Uh we're gonna now move to Ward four, and we're gonna begin with Marvina.
Hello, everyone. Um I think that this election is very important because it is time to recognize what the people in the community and their voices want. The city of Minneapolis voted in rent stabilization, and we have yet to see that happen. We have over seventy percent of renters here. We do see some new development coming up in Ward four in particular, but with the prices being fifteen to seventeen hundred for a one-bedroom. Many of the people that lives in this community just can't afford that. I run into women with children, men, um single folks every day who are being forced out of their homes um. Because there's no rent stabilizations, there's no um tenant protection. Um and the laws just doesn't fit the tenants here. And so I think with this election, it does give the um voters a voice. And they need to be heard.
Thank you, Marvina. Angela.
Um thank you, Asali. So. Uh this, this election is important to me. What made me throw my hat in the ring was the the last winter that snowed. And I, we kept getting stuck. I drive a SUV. I drive a fifteen hundred. That's a big boy. And so I kept getting stuck, and now my car squeaks as a result of that. You know, I just think they could have done more to uh kind of uh, you know, help that situation, you know, but I have a plan for that as well, and we could talk about it later, but this election is important because first of all, we gotta get people out of office that siphoning money to their friends, and their friends who don't live in this community that call themselves, so-called themselves, providing services to this area. This area is not thriving. We're not growing. We have so many problems over here w- with dishonesty and uh integrity being challenged. You know, that's why I'm running, because I'm for the people. I'm I'm transparent. You can ask me anything. I'm not, I'm not ashamed. I'm not afraid to answer any questions. But I do have a plan. Like I said, I have lived experiences. You know, and that's what makes me connect with people. You know, I'm not afraid to uh go up against Goliath. I'm not afraid of that. I'm not afraid to speak what the people have been saying to me. Like I said, you know, I started an organization when I came here. I moved here one week after the Super Bowl. I missed all that fun. Right? So I moved here and I just jumped right in. And then I noticed people didn't have anyone to help them, protect them against evictions, against the police, against everything that was coming against tenants right now. So I said, okay, let me start this organization, Housing Resource Network. I have been performing in that organization without funding since twenty nineteen because my heart is for the people. I'm I'm boots on the ground. Everything I do, I'm not afraid to confront. I'm not afraid to speak my mind and my voice about what it is that I hear people come to me with. And so when we first get get a new council with people that's about the business of communities and not self-interest. You know, and people just sitting behind desks saying they did something, and somebody's at a gala. Then we can move forward because we have to restructure that money. We have to because the people have to begin to feel safe and live and be neighbors again. So I'm running on that platform uh of uh uh what, what a, yeah, doing thi- not just for, not just for tenants, but for landlords too. They need to know how to be good landlords. They need incentives. You know what I'm saying? I'm creating incentives for landlord. We don't need a uh increase of three percent. We need a decrease of three percent. And so if landlords are incentivized through their tier level, only if they're, you know, they gotta be tier compliant. And then if we can just change a little bit of the things in this community, we could start to become better, and that's why I'm running. I'm just tired of all the mishandling of the money. I'm tired of all the 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 clicks that go on that hold people back. We can't live, we're suffocating over here in the fourth ward because of all the the uh the inappropriate behavior. It's inappropriate. And they're stepping on people who voted for them to get to a place of personal prosperity for themselves. They're not thinking about nobody else. So I'm running because I'm a resident over here. I've been over here three years. I wanna see something happen. Nothing is going on, and this is not personal. This is all about business with me. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you so much, Angela. Uh Latricia, I'm gonna actually allow you to respond to that.
What, was that about me?
It wasn't.
I, I wouldn't, I mean. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, just add.
I'm sorry, Asali. So I just wouldn't know what to respond.
Council, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to address those specific uh issues or concerns that Angela raised.
I don't, uh, not at all.
Okay.
But thank you, though, uh for the question. I think, I think I remember the question was. Um, can you repeat the question for me?
I can repeat the question. Why is this election important?
Oh, the election. Well, first, I wanna say, you know, every election is important to me. And I think municipal elections are most important because at this level, on the council level, you get to deal with everyday issues. You get to um hear from the people in the community that you represent. And if you're a council member like I am, you know, people walk up to you when you're weeding your garden or watering your garden and tell you what their needs are. And I would say, as a council member for um this year and a half, I've heard things like livability, public safety, economic development and housing. Um and in housing, it's preserving, purchasing, producing and protecting, right? Like that is what I hear from folks around housing here. And so, you know, it's important, the election this time, because how we remove our snow is on the line. How we deal with garbage dumping from first-tier suburbs is on the line. How people feel when you're responsive to them on the line. You know, a lot of times when I get a high volume of calls, it's really people who just wanna be heard, who wanna feel like um you care about what is happening to them in their neighborhood. And as someone who worked, I worked at North Point for seventeen years before I got elected to the council on uh public health policy. And I look at everything with a public health approach. And so a lot of the livability issues we face here that on the, are on the line for this upcoming election in every municipal election we have in this city are really um centered around public health, public health focus for me. You know, we've been talking about disparities on the north side for years, and I think there's so much more we can do at the government level around policy and programming um to help with that. And so again, you know, public safety, livability, economic development, and housing is on the line in every municipal election. And that's what I hear about most from my constituents, and I wanna keep serving them. So they feel like they're getting their fair share of every dollar that's down that city hall that belongs to them. And I feel like I'm making a big difference to the most underserved people and one of the most diverse wards in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Latricia. Moving to Ward three, uh Michael.
Uh thank you. So this election is very important as all elections are, but right now the city has begun to heal itself. It's begun to move forward off the terrible murder of George Floyd. Off the uh increase in violence. And we need to keep moving in that direction in order to have the income to help people who are less fortunate than us. The uh when you pay taxes, we pay, a lot of our taxes go towards the county who helps with housing. They're the primary government agency to build that affordable housing, to help with the addiction services and to help with the juvenile justice system. You know, the county made the decision to close the one-hundred-bed juvenile housing uh facility. And uh believe me, uh the kids that are stealing these cars, there's been five thousand cars stolen so far in the city mayhem. These children are crying out for help. The county needs to help them. We as a city need to encourage that. But to get back to our council member Ellison's point about the cost burn on hea- on housing. He raised a very, very good point. More and more people uh have to spend way, way too much of their disposable income on housing. The solution to that is government programs that can help the poorest of our poor, but also to to create new types of jobs. The green economy is gonna offer good, well-paid union jobs as we uh re uh insulate all of our homes as we allow for electrification. That's the opportunity that the city has is to build, to move forward, to do it in conjunction with the private sector. Because we're on the edge of a tremendous tax increase for all of us, whether you're a renter or homeowner, as our central business district continues its decline and its malaise. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We're now gonna move to questions directly from uh our audience. And so the first question is specifically for candidates who are running for reelection. Uh that includes Jeremiah, Latricia, Michael, and Aisha. Uh can you describe your specific work and achievements in housing justice over the past several years? I'll repeat that one more time. Can you please describe your specific work and achievements in housing justice over the past several years? I'm gonna go ahead and kick it to you first, Jeremiah.
Thank you for the question. We'll see if we, if I can actually fit this in two minutes. Um. Uh I'll start with the renter-first policy, uh which was an internal policy and was a big part of helping us uh restructure how we did regulatory services. Um you know, the the short of it is that the way we used to do um hold landlords accountable was very building-focused. Um which seems intuitive. Uh and the renter-first policy made it so that our policies are more, our enforcement is more renter-focused, right? You can revoke a license, you can condemn a property. Sometimes those things are unavoidable. But if those things result in a tenant being homeless, did you really support the tenant? That was the question. So the renter-first policy reoriented how we engaged in those kinds of properties. It made it so that we did what's called more TRAs, tenant remedies actions, uh which allows the tenants to have some agency over how they repair their property, um which is oversimplified, but basically what a TRA does. Uh it also helped us establish um uh uh an emergency repair board, which can allow us and go to go in and make uh emergency repairs in the instance that the city needs to do that. It also allowed us to um uh in uh write a uh uh moving assistance fees for when properties become uh uh uh, you know, unlivable for reasons that are outside of the tenant's control. Uh and we saw that with the Bell Loss. Um while the Bell Loss got a lot of help, not just from the city, not by any means. The amount of money that they were able to receive from the city was in part due because of that ordinance, right? Now, that was a community effort. Don't want the city to take credit for helping the Bell Loss residents uh entirely. But there was a role that the city played, and it's because of that ordinance, which wasn't written until twenty nineteen. Um. You know, we uh I I worked a lot on a uh on a um uh uh a screening in uh policy, basically uh also known as limited lookback, which allowed tenants to have more opportunity to get into housing so that they weren't having, you know, so if they committed a felony in nineteen ninety-one, for example, which was a which is an example of one tenant that I was working with, uh that that wouldn't, uh if they had had a clean slate from that point on and 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 that that, that that old felony wouldn't be lingering with them and basically be a life sentence on all of their housing uh um uh uh opportunity. Uh there's a few other things, uh obvious, you know, a a big part was I offered question three alongside Lisa Bender. Uh question three, of course, uh allowed us to pursue rent stabilization uh and that passed uh by the voters. And so authoring question three was also a big part of uh of what I was a a part of the work that I'm really proud of. So there's a few other things that I could go, that I could talk about. Um but I will, uh, I guess the last thing I will say was in intergover- developing an intergovernmental partnership with the AG's office to go after these massive landlords, the tenant. Uh the uh the 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 TRAs are great. Rent services is improving every single year and changing the way that they do their work. Uh but we wouldn't be able to go after those, you know, the Mel Dolls, the front yard residential uh without support from the state. And so uh developing that partnership is also something I'm really, really proud of.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Aisha, we'll pop it to you.
Awesome, thank you. Um so over the last twenty months on housing, I um have worked on rent stabilization, both um doubling renter representation on the city's rent stabilization work group and um authoring the policy that was recommended by the work group earlier this summer. Um we updated, uh we funded updating um fire suppression systems in uh public housing high-rises um in Minneapolis. We worked with, um I got to work with uh county, state, and federal partners um on opening a forty-bed women's shelter in Ward ten. Um we passed a package um to enact some common sense reforms in making our encampment response more humane, which was ultimately vetoed by Mayor Fry. Um and then on the, on the immediate constituent service work, um I got to work with social service providers um and encampment residents in Ward ten on modeling what a more humane response to encampments can look like and have continued working with um residents in uh facing um unjust evictions um and uh really unsafe living conditions um in in Ward ten in um making sure that those landlords are are held accountable.
Awesome, thank you, Aisha. Um I know that we have a candidate who has to leave in a few minutes, so I'm actually going to pause on that question so that uh Orin gets an opportunity to respond before she leaves. Um a resident uh community member wants to know, how can we make sure that you'll actually do what your campaign says you will?
That is a fantastic question. And that's a question I feel like every elected official and candidate should be prepared to answer um and prepared to do. Uh um for me, it's been really important to be consistent with all different types of people, regardless of what they believe, where they might disagree on where I stand on the issues, so they have that transparency. What they believe, where they might disagree on where I stand on the issues, so they have that transparency. Um, with me, they won as a ca- candidate and if elected as a council member on where to hold me accountable. One thing that we need to have in Ward twelve, um, in a highly engaged ward, uh. Electorally, people in my ward pay attention. Uh, we've had some of the highest voter turnout in the last few elections. Uh, they need their council member to be on the ground. I plan on door knocking. Uh, when it's not an election year, so people can come to a public town hall so they can hear from me and also. Um, craft the policy that I'm talking about and pushing for on my website and spoke a little bit about today. A few other things I think are good for accountability is also um. Being able to work with neighborhood associations in my community and having um. Quarterly meetings, maybe monthly meetings even uh, with the neighborhood to really engage on. What are your policy priorities? Um, how do they align with what I've been talking about? I think the biggest thing that ensures that I'll do what I'm saying is what I'm pushing for. Has been collected over the last ten months of running as a candidate from residents who have reached out. And I've always, for the last eight years, really worked in that intersection of community organizing, which is. Community outreach and engagement and policymaking. That's the best way that we do it and. Uh, I know council members on this call will agree. Um, as a council member, you only have yourself and two staff. That is not a lot of people to get the work done and council members really rely on their constituents to add capacity to really achieve. Policy wins and um, when I say policy, I mean. The legislation that touch pe- touches people's lives. Um. Policy equals people and people equal policy and with accountability, you can't make that happen. So thank you for the time. I'm sorry I have to jump. I have to go to a community meeting. Um, I appreciate it and I will talk to you later.
Thank you so much. All right. I want to make sure we get back to that first uh, question and uh, Latresha. And I'll, I'll rephrase the question. Um. Can you describe your specific work and achievements in housing justice over the past years?
Thank you for the question. I would say my uh. The first work I did in housing justice was, uh, we used to have a program at North Point. Where you would help people get rental assistance. And so I used to help families. Through um, through connections from other programs, get rental assistance and get down payment assistance for homeownership. Um, so that was probably, you know, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, something like that. Um, as a city council member, I've done things like I've worked with Attorney General Ellison on expungement. Uh, he and I have hosted several expungement clinics on the north side. What I found when I got elected was we had folks ranging from ages twenty up to eighty. Who couldn't get housing based on criminal history from the seventies, you know, like. Time, long, long time ago. So the Attorney General and I had hosted several um. Expungement clinics. And I think we ended up in this last year, we've ended up with somewhere between fifty and sixty folks who have gotten expunged. And we've definitely heard back from folks that they, they now have housing. So. I consider that a huge success. Not only have they got housing, but they also have um. Good paying jobs. You know, the life has just become more stable through those um, expungement clinics. And then my uh, one of the favorite. That is meant to have children have stable housing from K through twelve. And so the city partners with schools, the parks, um. Landlords to get families in stable housing. And we, I'm happy to say that we've added five more schools to the stable home, stable school list. Um, I've worked, I've worked with Senator Champion and a lot of our partners this year. You know, we brought home a record amount of money to the north side with the trifecta and a lot of that money included um. Opportunity for economic development, housing, a lot of the uh, tax credits have changed at the state level. So a lot of the folks I meet with, I would say, you know, I have lots of meetings in war for with developers. Who want to put housing in the ward, who love the north side, who came from here and want to see the north side thriving. That's deeply affordable market rate, a mixture of housing, you know, uh, townhomes, different housing also. And so uh, doing that work and then lastly. I'm on the board for CAPHC and CAP, CAPHC does a lot of work around um. Uh, you know, getting folks before they get evicted, getting them money to pay their rent. And they up that amount of money. It used to be like one month's rent and a security deposit. Now they go through looking at uh, what, what is the need here? How can we keep you in your home? You know, what, we don't want to just pay one month because next month you're going to be up this problem again. So it's not a set dollar amount like emergency assistance used to be. And that organization serves with millions of dollars and. Lots of families and it goes further than just housing and securities. CAP actually helps with car repairs and other things so that folks can get to and from work. So I'm proud of the work that I've done. I'm looking forward to continuing this work and building up partnerships with um, all elected officials. It's important that we work with every single body of government to make sure that all of our needs are met.
Thank you, Latresha. Michael.
Thank you. And I also have a uh, seven thirty commitment in my neighborhood, so I'll be leaving have this. Uh, so I'll, I'll say my goodbyes now and thank you. But, but I, I, I'm very passionate about housing and. What we in the third ward can do to help all the other wards in the city is stay that economic engine. Uh, to produce those tax dollars. You often hear that Minneapolis is the economic engine for the tax dollar in the state of Minnesota. Well, the third ward is that economic engine. And you have to help nurture that business community so the dollars are there to help the less fortunate. And I'll give you a really good example. Beacon Interfaith was uh, overran uh, some costs on, on a great project. On Forest Street North, uh, and the city was able, uh, and I, I was part of this. To, I helped them with an extra two million dollars. So they could finish that project and create that deeply, deeply affordable housing, thirty percent AMI. My door is always open to the Catholic charities. And of the world, uh, the Beacon Interfaith, the Isaiah's, the project for pride and living, especially uh, when it comes to uh, ownership, homeownership. Uh, this, this budget, this year's budget, when the, the mayor asked what my number one priority would be. Was fully funding Avivo Village. It's very expensive to run that. But it's, it is the most successful housing program we have. To help our sisters and brothers get off the streets, to get that step from homelessness. Into stability and then into even more permanent housing. And uh. I've also voted, it's also important, the city does not normally have. Uh, the services for, for addiction and homelessness that has been a, a county function. But now at the city, we help with that as well. So we have dedicated staff. To help with that homeless community. I'm very proud of those votes and I look forward to continuing. Uh, helping, uh, as I've helped with Minneapolis public housing, uh, we are going to have a big tax increase or a big, uh, I should say revenue increase. Uh, which comes from taxes to help repair these high rises. I have uh, three very large. Uh, high rises in the ward. And uh, those, those housing units need to be upgraded. They're old, they're tired. The people deserve better housing. I'm for that all the way. So thank you. And again, I have to run. I have the seven thirty engagement I, I had prior to. You booking this, but I enjoy talking and. Uh, seeing my fellow colleagues. It's very nice to be on a forum where we're not having harsh words against each other. So hopefully that'll continue on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And just a reminder to everyone that here at Urban Homeworks, we also are dedicated to affordable homeownership. As well as affordable rental housing and creating a pathway. For renters to move into homeownership if they choose to do so and. We look forward to the support of every candidate that is running in this election. Um, as we close, I want to give all of you the opportunity to share with those listening. Um, what we can. Look forward to holding you accountable to once you are in office. So that the question of how do we know you are going to deliver on your prom, the promises of your campaign? Uh. What is accountability? What are we holding you accountable to? Um, I'd like you to represent uh, how you plan on representing the voices of those who elect you. And I am going to. Just try to call on folks at random. I'm looking for my team. To support me in doing this. We want to make sure we get everyone that is in the room and Kate, I'm going to start with you.
Thanks, everybody. This has been awesome. And it's really great to hear from incumbents, challengers both. In terms of how you view your leadership and what you can do with it to make our city thrive. So I am running on a platform of results and accountability, really looking to transition from monitoring and measuring. To transforming. And when I think about um, what it is that Ward thirteen is needing, it, it's. I'm ready to represent it because it's what the entire city needs. It's safety. Safety is social justice and it is so elemental and it is of course. From harassment as well as crime. So that's extremely important to me. I don't know why we haven't moved a lot faster on the alternative responses that have sat in the office of innovation. So safety is number one for Ward thirteen. I have to think we all feel that way around the city. And then number two. The services, someone else on this, on this call talked about last year and. Nine weeks of one-sided parking is much harder on a renter population. Than it is for those of us down here with driveways and garages. But we don't like it either. And we need to do better as a city because it doesn't matter how you roll, whether you're in a car, on a bicycle or roller skates. You need, we need our road to be, to be functioning. It needs to be free of garbage. Someone else on this call, I believe, has constituents who more than anything would like to have their streets be clean. So garbage, potholes, snow. Um, so those are the types of investments that I would like to see that I believe there is. A common denominator across council that agrees that these are important investments to make. And then lastly, hold me accountable to leading by example. Hold me accountable to showing the rest of the city that Ward thirteen wants our yard signs that say all are welcome here, Happy Ramadan. Um. And, and so forth, Black Lives Matter, that we mean it. And that I'll show up with a thoughtful uh, social uh, agenda, even as I'm representing the politics of the ward. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Kate. Katie Cashman, you're next.
So what I think about this question and how folks in Ward seven can hold me accountable. Is not just what we do on the council, but how we do it and how we act in communities. So I will be. Accountable to being accessible and being transparent and being honest with constituents. I have been trying to lead with integrity on this campaign and to not over commit and over promise, but to show that. I do have a vision for Ward seven and that vision is a collective vision that's being built by all the people that I talk to every day. And so I'm really committed to accessibility in the ward and to um. Moving around Ward seven so that all people um, can engage in the budget conversations and town halls and other. Uh, participatory mechanisms and to be available to residents and to be accessible by. Email, by phone, by social media and other ways that people can access the city and our resources through me as the candidate or as the elected council member.
Thank you, Katie. Marvina.
Sorry, I was taking notes as I was listening. Um, can you just ask me that question when we're done? Sorry about that.
No problem. What can your constituents look forward to holding you accountable to?
I think my um. Track record speaks for itself. I'm a community um. Organizer, civil rights activist. I have stood in fight with people of the encampments. Um, people who have been um, displaced into the injustice system while also holding the system accountable. Um. They can look forward to me, my, my, my community.
I'm sorry, Marvina, it's a little bit difficult to hear you. Can you speak into the mic, please?
Okay, they can look forward to me. I am a grassroots organizer. And so I'm always on the ground. I have worked with people in the encampments, also people who have been um, displaced due to. Um, who were just released from um, prison from, I help um, organize around all of that work with the matter future situation. Uh, my work speaks for itself. I'm dedicated to North Minneapolis. As I said, I'm born and raised here. Um, and I will always be on the ground. Um, and so just like, um.
Thank you for that, Marvina. I'm actually going to go ahead because it's seven twenty-nine and we want to get people out of here uh, on time. So um, Angela, Kenneth and Zach, I'm going to ask you to keep your reflection to uh, a minute. And Angela, you're next. That is, yeah, we're going to go on that order.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, what they can hold me to is uh, integrity. Honesty and transparency. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for to come into a situation where that is the. Top tier of responsibility. For the ward that I'm going to be representing. And so uh, yeah, my reputation speaks for itself as well. I, I do good work. I, I put the community first. You know, most, uh, you know, I shouldn't, but I do all the time. I put community first before my own. Personal needs because I believe my heart. Uh, I believe in what I'm doing in my heart is in everything that I do. Because I love the community so much and I want us, I want to see us do better. I want us to become comfortable where we live. Everybody's afraid. There's such a big. Cast of fear all over the city right now. And you know, we have poor leadership. And I'm not saying that about everything and I keep, you know, this is not personal, but this is the business of the community. This is where we live. And so people can hold me to what I say I'm going to do. And I'm going to bring integrity. I'm going to bring honesty and I'm going to bring transparency, which will. Make me accountable for what I say I'm going to do.
Thank you, Angela. We're going to go ahead and move on to uh, Kenneth.
Yeah, just like I say, I know I'm old school, but I threw me out very white and practice what you preach. I thought that was funny and I thought it was good. I believe in that one hundred percent. But the most important thing that I have is this. Is that, look, people call me the people champ. And the reason why they call me the people champion is because of up at four or five things. One. I ran three hundred miles to give scholarships to people from the University of Minnesota. Now we've got over a thousand folks got a scholarship because of somebody who gave that run. That's me. I created programs that deal with our youth. And made them be in a position of being accountable for they are themselves, instead of them saying that they can't. They learned how to say I can't. I got to a point where, hey, now. I was working for the Minneapolis Public Schools and a kid gave me a concussion three years ago and I'm still here fighting for us. My thing is, is that yes, I do practice what I preach. I'm devoted to what I say I was going to do. I'm to a point where, hey, I'm, I feel like I'm too old for this game. But.
And I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to cut you off there because we have a, a few folks to go, but thank you for that response. Uh, and I do apologize, y'all, because equity is important to me, but we did run out of time. Zach, you're up next.
You can do that.
Zach, you're, um, you're.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
What can we hold you accountable to if you're elected?
Indeed. The residents of Ward thirteen can hold me accountable to continue fighting for the needs of the people. And actually implementing policies that I campaign on. Um, and being transparent, ensuring that my decisions and actions and. Interactions are open. Um. Really fighting for. Racial and social and economic justice. The people of Ward thirteen and the city will be able to hold me accountable for all of these things and to really be a voice of the people.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, Jeremiah.
You know, I uh, I definitely think accessibility is very important. It's why I put out, it's why I do weekly open office hours. It's why I have a biweekly newsletter. It's why I've tried to do quarterly. Uh, uh, events as well. Um, but I also think it's important to let folks know what you're going to do. When I came into office. There were a number of things, especially housing related, especially economic development related. Like getting access to capital for local businesses to buy the buildings they operate in. Those are things that I've done and I want to make sure that big folks know what my intentions are. I think that we're going to pass. I think that we're going to pass, uh, uh, you know, I'm going to pass, uh, ten opportunities to purchase. I think we're going to make serious movement and pass a rent stabilization policy that works for the city of Minneapolis. And I want to make sure that we continue to fund, uh, you know, uh, uh, businesses so that we can use business as, so that our communities can use business as a way to, um, wealth build as well as housing and homeownership. So, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jeremiah. Ayesha, we're going to close with you.
Awesome. Well, um, I told Ward ten residents when I first ran that I would fight shoulder to shoulder with them, um, in making sure that the voices of those who are most impacted by decisions were prioritized in decision-making. I have done my best to do that over the last twenty months and that's what Ward ten residents can continue to hold me accountable to.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, thank you all so much for your time. Thank you for staying just a little bit longer. I know we went over. I'll keep this short. Thank you to everybody for being here and just sharing your heart and your vision for Minneapolis and for community. Thank you to all the candidates, uh, for all the community partners for, and community members for listening in and sending your questions. I know we didn't get to every question, so please contact your, um, candidates in your ward. Um, in the chat, you'll see information on who's in your ward. Please ask them these questions because it's so important for them to know, um, what's important to you. Again, they serve you. So we really want to empower you moving forward. Um, we really hope you enjoyed this Housing Justice Forum. Um, if you did, we really encourage you to, um, use a QR code to come to our website and donate to Urban Homeworks so we can continue doing events like this moving forward and continue being that bridge with our elected and our community. Thank you all so much for your time. Um, there are more information in the chat as well about how to, um, how to vote, where to vote, and everything you need to do for registration. Because it's an election year, please go out and vote. Thank you all for your time and please have a great rest of your night.